CERT or Community Emergency Response Teams is made up of volunteers who head into disaster areas to provide basic medical aid and help in search and rescue efforts. And on this anniversary of the Northridge quake, city leaders honored those volunteers.
The San Fernando Valley is the epicenter of disaster. And as a council member of the 12th District, I'm proud to say that the first CERT team was 30 members from the Devonshire Division Neighborhood Watch Group to help those who can't help themselves in a major disaster.
CERT is a program of the Los Angeles Fire Department and goes back to 1986. And just before the new year, City Attorney Mike Fuhr's office rolled out new efforts to prevent gun violence in domestic abuse situations. Under the current law, any person served with a domestic violence restraining order or criminal protective order must surrender or sell their registered firearms within 24 hours. The new protocol has the LAPD working closely with the City Attorney's Office to help prosecutors identify those individuals, file appropriate gun charges, and ensure that no defendants fall through the cracks. The city has opened yet another new park, the State Street Recreation Center at 716 North State Street in Boyle Heights. With the help of the California Endowment and the Los Angeles Clippers Foundation, the State Street Rec Center was selected as the first of three locations for 2014 to receive a playground and basketball court refurbishment. The refurbishment included the replacement of the existing playground equipment, the addition of a fitness station, and the resurfacing of the playground area and the basketball court. Council President Herb Wesson represented the city at the recent unveiling of Sung Kyung Chang Square at the intersection of 8th Street and Western Avenue. Chang, a businessman, has for years advocated for LA's Korean-American community on issues close to their heart.
He's been an advisor to Mayor Garcetti, Villarosa, Han. He's been an advisor to my former boss Nate Holden, Tom Labange, and to me.
Chang was born in North Korea and later made his way to Los Angeles where he achieved the American dream by becoming a successful entrepreneur in the clothing, retail, and wholesale business.
When talk turns to education or recreation, it's often children's programs that receive the most attention. But some of the city's senior citizens are asking for continued support for programs that keep their body and mind young.
The senior citizens are putting on a show at Glassell Park Community and Senior Citizens Center's sixth annual end-of-year celebration. They start slow with Tai Chi and move seamlessly into an upbeat line dancing routine they learned in their physical fitness class. The celebration, held jointly with the Los Angeles Unified School District's Division of Adult and Career Education, honored local and state leaders for their ongoing support and advocacy.
Programs for older adults, health and safety, parent ed are slated to be cut in June of 2015 throughout all the public schools and community colleges throughout the entire state of California. We want to thank you for being a leader, saving our division, our programs up until June of 2015. And we need you to continue fighting for us.
For his part, Senator Kevin DeLeón says we must not forget those who came before us.
As elected officials, regardless of what our age may be and what generation, that it's our role and responsibility to take care of those who took care of us.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and Councilmember Gil Sadio, both of whom were unable to attend but represented at the event by members of their office, were also honored for their commitment to the city's senior citizens.
So each one of you that's sitting here, that makes those decisions at the state level, board level, we ask you to save programs for adult education. Join the mayor to save the programs for adult education.
This is truly a celebration, a celebration of the year of participating in programs and classes where you've been able to strengthen your muscles, where you've been able to expand your mind, and really get in touch with your soul.
And this group of seniors made sure no one was safe from some much-needed exercise. Even Senator DeLeón got pulled onto the dance floor for a few shakes, proof that even at their age, these seniors have still got a lot to teach the younger generation.
In this week's list of things to do, a weekly cardio class, music of Hawaii comes to Little Tokyo, and Japanese taiko drumming at UCLA.
Fitness guru and high-level trainer Nathan Ford will lead a new donation-based fundraising fitness program at the Barnes-Dahl Art Park every Saturday from 9:00 to 9:45 a.m. You're invited to take part in this weekly 45-minute cardio class on the West Lawn. Donations will benefit Barnes-Dahl Art Park. This high-energy group fitness class offers a full-body workout combining strength training and cardio suitable for the active individual. The first class is on Saturday, January 25. Barnes-Dahl Art Park is located at 4,800 Hollywood Boulevard. More details can be found at barnsdahl.org. Hawaii's famed guitarist, vocalist, and songwriter Willie Kahai Alii, better known as Willie K., is back at the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center on Saturday, January 25. He'll bring his unique brand of music from traditional and contemporary Hawaiian to blues and rock to audiences at 7:30 p.m. The JACC is located at 244 South San Pedro Street in Little Tokyo downtown. Go to jaccc.org for ticket prices and other details. According to a story written in one of Japan's oldest books, taiko drumming was created to lure the goddess of sunlight from her cave. On Sunday, January 26, you can help lure the goddess from her hiding place when you attend the free Family Jam Drum Up the Sun Taiko Event from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Fowler Museum at UCLA. UCLA's Kyoto Taiko will put on a performance. You'll also get to make your own drum out of recycled materials. The Fowler Museum is located at the North Campus at UCLA. Detailed maps and parking instructions can be found by going to fowler.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The Department of Recreation and Parks is helping youngsters show off their athletic skills and earn some coveted bragging rights. Anita Bennett explains.
After the regular season ends for young flag football and soccer players, the athletes have a chance to test their skills through the Department of Recreation and Parks' annual Valley Shoreline All-Star Playoffs.
It's fun like to play with my friends and get involved in playing a sport.
The best of the best young players recently made it to the championship tournament. It was held on the field at Balboa Recreation Center in Encino.
Lots of different parks. I think we have Balboa, Granada Hills, Cheviot. Pretty much everybody who had fall sports like soccer and flag football participated or at least submitted a team into this tournament.
All of the teams were made up of players who normally participate in soccer and flag football games at their neighborhood city-run parks.
The competition was great in this tournament, and we were happy to be in it. The Rec Center put on a great show, and we're glad to be part of Northridge Rec Center, and we love it.
The tournament was open to kids between the ages of nine and 12 years old.
I've always liked playing flag football. I like running around the field and yanking the flag off somebody while they're running and throwing it back.
The tournament currently attracts about 150 young athletes. Organizers say it helps keep them busy, they make new friends, and they remember this experience for the rest of their lives. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
For more information on joining these youth sports programs, contact your neighborhood city-run recreation center. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Bookie item pickup?
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. Offering your taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weiser, Corret, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. 10, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. In the first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Bonin moved, Bonin's not here. Mr. Ofero moves, and Ms. Martinez seconds. Next item?
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Blumenfeld moves. Councilmember Corret seconds. Next item?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Great, thank you very much. If everybody in council chambers can please rise. Thank you. And Mr. Price, if you could lead us in the flag salute.
My hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, members, if I can direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, before we begin, there's a request to continue Item 1C to tomorrow, January 22nd, and Item 11 to April 23rd.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
And also, for the record, there's a correction. Item 1A is located in Council District 8. Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay. And do we have any public hearings? I've already, it's notice for public hearing. We do have some cards, so we'll go ahead and hold those.
Next is items 2 through 8, which are items for which public hearings have been held.
2 through 8. And, members, do we have any specials on 2 through 8? If we could, move Item 6 back to committee as well, to public safety? All right, that'll be the order without objection on Item 6. And there are no speakers on the balance of the items. Item 2 is a commission appointment.
Is the commissioner going to speak for the center table?
Commissioner?
Is the commission here? Yeah, when 2 comes up. When it comes up, I just think it's good to give them an opportunity to say.
Okay, that'll be, that's for plum. So if you want, Mr. Labange, do you want to hold Item 2?
Yeah.
Okay, the balance of those items are before us. Seeing no speakers on the queue, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Where does that take us? And forthwith on 8 by Mr. Fuentes without objection.
Items 9 through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, those items are open for consideration. Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, is this LAPD leaving here? Is this the cyber thing? Is all those people for cyber?
I don't know.
Well, you have a motion on that, Mitch.
Yes.
And I think it's real important with the current challenge that's happening to Target and other department sources and constituencies. I don't want all those people to get away if they're there, Mitch.
Mr. Labange, so we've already heard it in committee. We're going to note and file it because the mayor actually put out an executive order, and it has already launched.
Well, I think we should have someone someday, members, at the center table, because people do tell me they watch this channel called 35, and they learn a lot. So for the future, I'd just say on that, it's an idea for something that is so critical to our country.
Absolutely, critically important. No, thank you, Mr. Labange. Okay, seeing no speakers on the queue. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And where does that take us? We'll go ahead and vote to reconsideration for those with cards for items that have not been held. And we have cards on, I believe, Items 9, 10. 10, which 10?
Also Items 13, 14, and 15.
13, 14, and 15. Okay, so those items would be reconsidered for cards? Open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Okay, so 11 was continued for 90 days, and 12 was passed for no cards. And we'll go ahead and send 12 forthwith without objection as well. And where does that take us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes counsel to presentations or items called special.
Okay, I believe one of the presentations was canceled, and the other one is not ready yet. Not ready yet, okay. Mr. Labange?
May I introduce the distinguished group here, Mr. President?
Please.
Mr. President, we have here from Beijing, China, the Capital Normal University, who's here on a study mission. We welcome you, ask you to rise and be recognized by the City Council, their principal, Zhenzhu Jingyang. Xie xie. And congratulations to Beijing with the 2008 Olympic Games. We're an Olympic city, and for us members, the first Chinese athlete ever to compete in the Olympic Games was in the '32 Games in Los Angeles. And the first time their team came in full was the '84 Games post the Revolution of '49. Xie xie, welcome to Los Angeles.
Okay, cards for Item 1. Sean, followed by John Walsh, followed by Myra Hall.
Yes, Item 1, I'm against this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Myra Hall, and there was a lien placed on a property of ours, a rental property at 552 West 110th Street. The first notification that we received of this lien was the notice of hearing that was posted on the vacant property. I have spoken with Mr. Charles. I'm also in the process of communicating with an inspector, Fols, because we had never received any notification of the violations. In fact, we were not even aware that there were any violations. The tenant that I had at this property, she had been residing at the property from the time that we got the first notification throughout, through mid, I think she moved out around May of 2013. And so what I'm wanting to do is I'm actually protesting this lien, and I'd just like to have a little extra time to get this matter resolved with Mr. Charles and Mr. Fols.
And if you can state the address as well?
The address is 552 West 110th Street. And this is my first time having to have this type of an experience, so excuse me.
I believe that's Council District 8.
And initially, when I had gotten the notice of posted, of the hearing, the district on the letters that I had saw was District 15. So I had been initially trying to get in contact with an inspector at District 15 and wasn't able to, so I finally called the council at District 15 to find out the property is at District 8.
Yes, it's District 8. So what we're going to do is we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk till the end of the meeting and see if we can get you to meet with Building and Safety on the side as well.
Okay.
Since there's nobody here from CD8 currently, and then we'll bring it back at the end of the meeting and see if there's any resolution to it. If we can have one of the deputies from CD8 come down and, that'd be great as well, and meet with, okay? Great, thank you. And Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org.
I'm going to save you some time as well, make it a little easier for you if I could. You've got several cards in.
Well, I just want to speak on this issue.
Yeah, I'm going to have you speak on items. You've got several cards, 1, 9, 10, 13, and 15, all the cards you filled out.
So you're giving me five minutes?
Correct.
Okay, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The lady before made a big mistake. Whenever you have any trouble, you find out who your district councilman is, you go to Parks. The reason for these problems here is simple. It's that you do not send out these liens by registered mail, or else you would have had her signature. Now, this is for $5,000. What happened to this lady is that a toxic tenant did $5,000 worth of damage to her property, disappeared, and then all of a sudden she gets a bill for $5,000, excuse me, $6,555.99. Remember, I'm up here not to scream, "I know you're a bunch of crooks," but to make sure that you out there watching know your rights, because you will not hear it from them. And when it's a toxic tenant, I speak out against toxic tenants. And when it's a toxic landlord, I speak out against toxic landlords. And it's obvious this lady was not a toxic landlord. Number 9. Okay, number 9 is Lara Yuretzian to the Police Permit Review Panel. In other words, when you have one a liquor license, and remember, the reason we have as many hit-and-runs, and we had one with the mayor just recently, hit-and-runs in the city of Los Angeles, of course, we have more liquor licenses than per square mile than any city in, probably in the world. Maybe Las Vegas, but other than that, second to Las Vegas. Okay, Police Permit Review Panel. All they do is give people the right for licenses. We've only had, Ms. Martinez is the first person in, what, 20 years? We've only had, Ms. Martinez is the first person in, what, twenty years to stop a liquor license? She deserves a reward for that. It's just automatic. Okay, Miss Yuretzian, this lady who's going to be put on the permit, again, we checked her out. Number one, she has no kiddie porn. Now, remember, you voted for a man here who went to prison because he had a kiddie porn on his website. That's how little vetting you do of the people that are placed on, that the mayor wants to appoint. Number ten, and that number ten is the REAP. We all know that the REAP helps tenants, it's for tenants, and I've been a tenant in this city since 1976. I'm not somebody who comes up here who's never even lived in the city of Los Angeles and says, "I want this for city of Los Angeles." I've lived there from seventy-six, before that in sixty-six, I lived in the city of Los Angeles. Now, we're gonna go to number thirteen, unlucky number thirteen. This is the installation of an artwork. I don't know why you stopped allowing murals, but since you're starting to allow murals, the city looks much brighter. Thank you for allowing, for finally listening to us. This is the Sunset Junction streetscape. As we know, the Hispanics have been, have been pushed out of Sunset Junction by yuppies, but the yuppies are good, excuse me, they're no longer yuppies, they're millennials. The millennials' parents are yuppies. The millennials were born since, what, 1992? So we're in favor of this Martin Luther King Festival, the money that was spent on the additional entertainment for sound and art scripts. That was a very good investment. Sometimes you're right. You know, when I come up here, you don't know whether I'm gonna slam you or praise you. When I praise you, I can go way off subject, you never stop me. But when I criticize you, I gotta stay on the subject, just like now. Now, the last item that I'm gonna speak on is number fifteen. This is related to quimby and fin fees. Quimby means that when you, when you do business with the city and buy or sell property, a certain percentage of it goes for parks in the area, except sometime, from the developer. And we're all in favor of the quimby fees, but don't let the term quimby fool you. We need more parks, we need better parks, but we don't need a phony park over the freeway in Hollywood, which is, in fact, we're asking the DA to look into that Hollywood Park, Hollywood Central Park. So what we're saying here, ladies and gentlemen, stay tuned, it won't be long, this is gonna be a short meeting, I'll be back here, where I don't have restrictions on what I can say. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other cards on item one, and item one A, we're gonna hold on the desk. One C was continued, so what's before us is item one B. If we could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and bring up the commission appointments then to the, to the front if we could. Mr. Labange, you called Commissioner Special? Items two and nine, so we'll go ahead, we can bring you both up together if you'd like.
Good morning, Mayor.
Absolutely.
They're both for planning mayors?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Members, our communities often get agitated or excited about development, land use, planning, and these are two fine commissioners proposed by Mayor Garcetti. Just tell us a little about your history, where you live, what's your favorite neighborhood, outside your neighborhood which you live? See, mine's San Pedro, everybody. I love San Pedro. But, so I'm a Silver Laker, but I love San Pedro. I love out here way too, Fleebay, I love all the Hanson Dam, but that's another story. Okay.
I live in the Los Angeles area, and that is my favorite neighborhood, other than Little Armenia, of course.
Okay, good, okay, you got it. For the record, state your name.
My name is Lara Yuretzian, and do I need to spell it? No. I'm an attorney, and I have to do that every day, every morning in court. That's my background, I'm a criminal defense attorney, been doing that for over fifteen years. I grew up, part of my childhood was in Little Armenia. I currently live in the Los Angeles area, like I said. I'm very excited about being on the Police Permit Review Panel and serving my community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Walsh for the planning.
Ah, good morning, councilman, how are you? Well, I have to say, I love my neighborhood as well. I've been there since 1989. However, if I could get a little closer to the beach, that would be nice, too. I know my husband would like that. This is a very exciting thing for me, and I just wanted you to know how I got here. I, I'm here because my neighbor was killed crossing the street practically in front of my house. And I was one of those people not too long ago that I was really happy to let other people make decisions about my city and my community and even my street. And when that happened, because of an unsafe condition, we all got together and we got that stop sign, and we got that crosswalk, and it made a huge difference in my neighborhood, and certainly made my street safer. And then one of my neighbors, Arturo Martinez, said, "Hey, you should join the West Side Neighborhood Council." And seven years later, our board has put pear trees on Pico, and an outdoor movie theater at the park, and furniture in the libraries, all really good stuff. So this seems like a great natural extension from my street to my community to my region. And if I just can have a second, I'd really like to thank my councilman, Paul Corretts, for all the support he's given me and my group through the years, and especially his staff, and also Joan Pelica, who's been amazing. And while I'm thanking folks, because it's kinda like the Golden Globes all of a sudden, but I'd really like to thank the mayor's office, and especially Ryan Carpio, who told me where to sit, and told me where to stand, and told me where to park, and told me where the bathrooms were, which is very important for newbies like me. I'm really excited about this, and I just want you to know I'll do my best, and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to serve.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, thank you. I think you expressed too your love of community, love of the city, and your pride in your heritage, and the fact that you acted on your heart in trying to make your neighborhood better. I think that's what Mr. Garcetti's trying to do as mayor, so I certainly welcome you to ask for an eye vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretts?
I just wanna thank Lisa for being willing to take on this position, for all the things that you've done. She's not just a member of the Neighborhood Council, but many of the good things that this Neighborhood Council has done are because of her activism. You could see it all over the neighborhood, and I think it's sort of a natural extension to now be dealing with planning. So I'm very excited that you're doing this. She's also a very easy person to work with, I think you'll be a great addition to that body. And if she looks familiar, it's probably because she has acted in just about every television show on, on TV she's appeared in. So not just a character actress, but a good character for the neighborhood, so.
Thank you, councilman.
We appreciate your willingness to do this.
Thank you so very much, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we have one card for item nine, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on item two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Great, thank you very much. Congratulations. And then on item nine, we can ask you both, if you could, you can have a seat in the front again, and we've got one speaker card on item nine, then we'll go ahead and vote on you, but you can both have a, have a seat in the front if you'd like. Thank you very much. Mr. Herman, come on up on item nine, and then I'm gonna ask you to stay there after we vote on nine, Mr. Herman, on your other items, items ten and fifteen, but come on up, on item nine.
There's quite nothing to rehearse here, Los Angeles. Hopefully, we gained someone of importance for this city, someone whose recommendations for this council will take an action on behalf of all of you in Los Angeles, all you Angelenos, because nowadays, it's detrimental that we change and reform our policies, our procedures to protect the rights of our citizens. And this appointment for Ms. Laura, hopefully will go well, as you heard, she said that, "Hey, I was able to fix a sidewalk by what I do." And so hopefully, in response to that, the majority of our sidewalks and streets in the city of Los Angeles will be changed, so that we don't have the incompetence, ignorance of no action, broken policy by our local government. So again, going back to the permit review panel.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura, please don't interrupt, please.
You gotta stay on the item. So if you don't stay on the item, then it's my job to interrupt you and remind you to stay on the item.
Fine, but you're interrupting when I'm trying to get back to topic.
Well, get back to topic, and I'll let you know.
In every story, there's an end, thank you. So going back to this, Laura, take special interest in Los Angeles, it's a lovely city, and we know that you will probably improve a small percentage of it once you get through a lot of this bureaucracy and nonsense politics. Thank you.
You can stay up there if you please, thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item now, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Herman on item ten and item fifteen. Also, colleagues, one A was continued for two weeks, we'll go ahead and continue that item for two weeks.
Now, here's a good one.
And congratulations to the commissioners as well.
Notification, oh, should I wait?
Go ahead and start.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for the, for the record, for item one A, that date would be February fourth.
Correct, February fourth, thank you.
Earlier on item one, we heard about what? Building and safety issues. Again, rent escrow account issues, notification. The city allows Housing Authority and Building and Safety to violate people's civil rights when it comes to their violations and their citation process. Zuma Dogg pointed out the scandal, the corruption, the bribery of building and safety, and this could lead to Housing Authority bribery. So I call out to the FBI and to any municipality that believes there's a problem here, because how dare you, Los Angeles, allow people to pay the city fines, put it back into the general public account, and somehow continue to not take away the citations or the violations that you place upon your constituents? It's ridiculous. And I'm gonna read it. Removing the following properties from rent escrow account, the program REAP. To me, REAP is a ripoff program. Zuma Dogg, if you go to his blog, you'll read about it, and in the same manner, we today speak about REAP. John Walsh spoke about REAP, spoke about building and safety and Housing Authority, how it affects all our lives. How many more issues with housing authorities do we have to come up with? How many issues do we have to fight against building and safety here? It's going on and on. It's ridiculous. Item ten, what was my other number, sir? Mr. Speaker?
Fifteen.
Going on item fifteen, Mr. Speaker. We're talking about quimby. Mr. Weezer, who's not here, for the record, and Mr. Krikorian, who's up walking around celebrating. Yes, quimby should be only and specifically placed on its position for parks. Yes, there is in question how these funds and an amendment are interacting here. Let's keep quimby to quimby and keep our hands out of the big piggy bank that local officials continue to crisscross by your actions and your false lies when it comes to where you're placing our quimby funds and fees for our parks. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll ask Donna Pearlman come up. And you have three cards, so we're gonna go ahead and add thirteen and fourteen to the current item, so you can speak on thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen together.
Okay. All right, first we got thirteen, it seems like an awful lot of money, $124,758 for landscaping and for murals. I'd like to know exactly what it was being done, what exactly did they do on these bloomers. So that's what I don't like, is that the, it sounds like a great idea, except that nobody knows exactly what they did. So certainly, they took away our video conferencing because of lack of money, but they certainly have this $124,758 to try to place certain areas that are not the San Fernando Valley all spoofed up. So I'd like to know exactly what they did. And number fourteen, that's $20,000 for the Martin Luther King Festival. I'd like to know, I'd like to see a cut down exactly what was spent on that, so we know exactly what was good that was spent in an area, again, that was special to the Los Angeles City Council, of course, on Los Angeles. Of course, San Fernando Valley is not considered important. We don't have any Martin Luther King events being, at least over here, paid for on this number fourteen. So let's cut down and see where that is. And last of all, number fifteen, the quimby funds, also $47,500 over one year. I also like to get your, I'd like for you to get your hands out of the big cookie jar to, and only spend it for the parks. And I'd like to be able to see a list of what parks quimby funds are being used for, and whether there are really parks and not these imaginary small parks that was in Garcetti's old districts. I'd like to see, yeah, so a certain amount go to parks, and it needs to be in parks. But I'd really like to know exactly more about quimby funds and why a lot of areas are suddenly using quimby funds and not being used for the area, because it's another thing that all lots of money is being spent by the city council. So exactly, so they won't be able, and they don't care about bringing video conferencing back to Van Nuys, they wanna spend lots of money on quimby funds, on parks, that nobody knows where they're at. So let's get the act together, City Council, let people know what you're doing, and spell it out. Put it out where people can go and say, "I, you can go to this area," and people can look, they see exactly where you're spending your money. This is not right, that it's just suddenly, it sounds cute, let's pass it. Or that's all the city council, they think, you know, that's okay if it sounds nice, if it sounds like, you know, something that makes a place beautiful, but nobody knows exactly what it is, or if they even did anything. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Sean, if you can come on up on items thirteen and fourteen.
Yes, I'm against both of them, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. On thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sacks. I did hold these three items, I actually held a few others, but they were already heard in committee. AB 1290, actually, there was a story in the LA Times yesterday, "How to Make Lethargic LA Grow." And these two, I guess one professor from Cal State Northridge and an adjutant scholar at the Cato Institute wrote this article about the ninety-five active neighborhood councils, how to put things together for the city council, how to get money into the city. And the reason I bring that up is because numerous times these items have appeared, you have AB 1290 funds being used here that are generated, that's money returned to the city council districts and ends up in the city council office, money that was originally generated from redevelopment funds, but there's no more redevelopment funds, yet the city, the state is still sending this money back to the city. This is the type of funding that should go to the neighborhood councils for them to use to revitalize neighborhood areas. Although, again, I must appreciate, Mr. Sadio, he got a million dollars into his council district, but he hasn't let anybody know where the million dollars came from. Maybe Mr., what the hell was it, Ms., what was his name? I can't even think of his name. Who was that knucklehead? Who did you take? Who did you take over for? Reyes? Maybe he left a shoebox behind filled with money. Because item 14 refers to city general funds. That's money the council districts, the council offices should pool for their resources, for their agenda items. Not AB 1290 funds. Not bus bench revenue. Not billboard revenue. Somehow, that should be worked into the neighborhood councils, get more empowerment to them. You still haven't heard anything from the other 14 council districts regarding the million dollars. Although, we did hear a report from the commission that was sent up. And we did hear from Mr. Weezer. And we did hear from Mr. Krikorian, what a great job the city council has done, even though the report says otherwise. But neither one of them have come up with a million dollars for their district, as Mr. Sadio has in less than six months of service. The grant funds. This item on the Quimby fees is not really about Quimby fees. It's a grant fund. And it's a grant fund. Part of this item says it's going to amend a contract with Ramey Associates. And the fin fees, I believe that's for historic properties where people want to designate a home as an historic property. They pay a fin fee. What has this Rameyan Associates done that qualifies them to change the Quimby fees? It says here, the program. Have you had a hearing in any of the committees where these people have presented their work to the committee, the Parks and Recreation Committee, that stated, hey, we have done this, we have done that? This is a grant. This isn't fees for park land. This isn't fees to create new parks. This is a fee that's going to go to a private agency, a private company with a request for a proposal? No. To what? Enhance this program. What have they done again? Same question. It's a question you ask over and over again. Because unfortunately, as many people come up here, and although I'm not one to say that one day you do a good job and next day you're trash and garbage and racist, pretty much, you're not doing a good job. That's why I don't differentiate between the two. But you don't answer any questions. You just don't answer any questions. Doesn't matter what. What comes up before you, you don't answer any questions. Educates you, the public, lets you know, these fees are out there. You have problems in your neighborhood? Call your district office. Call your council person and say, hey, council, Mr. Sadio's district is... First district, spent a million dollars. Where's our million dollars? Where is our million dollars? Stop with the presentations. Get a million dollars out here. We got sidewalks. We got trouble.
Great, Mr. Sacks, if you want to stay there for a moment, you can kick us off and open us for a general public comment. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Seeing no speakers on the queue, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you for a general public comment, Mr. Sacks.
For general public comment. It's gonna be a very sad day this coming Thursday as the MTA board is going to consider changing the rules that allow people to speak in front of the board. Another multi-billion dollar corporation, just as the county is, an MTA. They're going to limit the amount of time you get to speak on items on their non-consent calendar. You used to, we were originally limited to one minute per item. Now they're going to limit you to three minutes on a non-consent calendar. You want to ask questions. You want to get some answers. So let's see. You know, they have a TIFI loan, which is a loan from the federal government for the Crenshaw Line. So the MTA created a nonprofit to oversee it. Now they're getting a TIFI loan for the Purple Line extension. But they're not creating a nonprofit to oversee it. You ask why, you don't get an answer. Anybody know what the 3% local return is? The 3% local return is what money is paid by a community back to MTA if they get to measure our project. So Englewood gets a bill for $17 million, which will cost them $26 million. Santa Monica gets to negotiate with the construction authority. Why doesn't Englewood? What about the valleys, what about the cities that are on the gold line? They're getting measure our funding. You ask a question. Who do they negotiate with? Do they negotiate with the gold line, which we know is legal or illegal? Or do they negotiate with the blue line, whose supervisor Molina authorized $640 million to in March of 2010? You ask a question, you don't get an answer. Now, we've just had hearings on the LA airline, the route to the airport. But they didn't include a tunnel. You ask questions, you don't get an answer. It's a very sad day.
Donna? Come on up.
I'm trying to speak for Miriam's behalf since you made it difficult for her to speak closing Van Nuys video conferencing. She's not happy with the City Personnel Committee way they handle medicine for city employees and family. It has to be done by mail order only. And you have to wait a long time, not instantly, within a few days to be able to get your medicine because it's by mail order. You have to wait to reorder when you're almost out at the last second. It only gives you bare minimum, and they only give you bare minimum amount. No extra for emergencies. That's not right, the way they do that. The city employees should have the option to pick it up at the hospital and get up where they're nearby. And if it doesn't, and you also have to worry about the medicine, whether it gets lost or delayed in the mail. Anyway, Miriam has been able to speak on her behalf with her virus and asthma and laryngitis, she can't even sing right now, to come all the way downtown for our trip. It's not right of you to make people with asthma come all the way downtown if they live in the valley. So that's another area with people who are taking away the right to speak, people with illnesses along with the disabled and the elderly. They can only speak when they come, they can only speak when they come to Van Nuys. And if you have to miss that meeting, it's a long time to wait till the next. City council got their raises, even those who just got started. Anybody want to donate that amount to let people in the valley have a voice? It's not the First Amendment right to speak for the San Fernando Valley that you're taking away. You certainly be able to give all the perks to the city council members. And that's not right. Bring back video conferencing for Van Nuys.
Alex Schaefer. Followed by Mr. Herman.
Hi, I just wanted to come and actually say something positive. I read an article, I'm addressing Gil Sadio, and I read an article that said that a city councilman has proposed that Los Angeles consider ending its multimillion dollar ties with troubled JP Morgan Banking Company. Is that real? This is not like an Onion article I'm reading? And you didn't wake up with like a horse's head next to you over the weekend, you know? Or creepy pictures of your family? Wow, seriously? You know, this is, yes, a city that holds over $100 million in JP Morgan stock. And I wouldn't be surprised if you guys weren't snookered like a bunch of other cities to buy toxic mortgage-backed securities. Maybe it's time to get out of the top of a Ponzi scheme. Yes, you said in the article, JP Morgan targeted underserved communities and someone must hold them accountable. Awesome. I never thought I'd believe that local government would be the most powerful. But we're in a country with a Justice Department that's doing nothing. Eric Holder's doing nothing in the face of economic terrorism and criminality, things like drug money laundering that we're seeing HSBC do, et cetera. So the SEC does nothing. The Justice Department does nothing. Maybe a city severing ties with a too-big-to-fail bank is actually going to send a message. Hallelujah, man. More power to you, too. Because you're like looking into the eye of Sauron right now. You know? And I'd like to say to you, I don't know what the next process is as far as a council whatever group together. But I would ask myself, not should we, but where are we going to move our money? That's going to be the big question. Because who does not have dirty hands in this? Where are you going to go? Every single too-big-to-fail bank that has received bailout money is a pig that does not deserve the money in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Herman, come on up. Please share with us.
One man's vulgarity is another man's oratory. Did you know Los Angeles Council, again, has broken a US law by cutting off what? Public speaking. Enforce silence speaking here in council chambers from public comment. That would be a futile right to our civil rights, our civil liberties. Censorship from occupied public space for public meetings by intervening authority, right, Mr. Krikorian, who's speaking over there in the background? All of you elected officials have disagreed with our comments, our expressions, and our freedom of speech. Where's your moral authority when it comes to us Angelinos? You elected officials cannot, should not, sacrifice political speech to a formula. Yes, to a formula that what? Needs more civility? No, more speech, not censorship. For censorship is an action that you've taken many times here in council chambers and violated our First Amendment rights. Freedom of speech affords adequate protection, Mr. Krikorian. Yes, discussion affords adequate protection when it comes to our civil rights. This includes obscenity, offensive language, offensive language, and swear words. Yes, vulgarity. Censorship should not be censored by what you want us to say. But our First Amendment rights, our freedom of speech, will not be a just to your meaning. But meaningful from our hearts, from what we want to change in our society, what we want, what's best for Los Angeles. So all of you, Zuma Dogg's case for what? Freedom of speech, First Amendment rights, is going to be heard this month. So keep on to the news of this, what's going on in Los Angeles.
All right, thank you. Sean, come on up. Followed by John Walsh. If you guys want to come up right after him. John Walsh. And then Byron Barajas. Thank you.
I'd like to bring up this, I want to bring up an update about the St. Charles reaffirmation. Everybody must know. It's moving along. It's going to be open, we pray, we pray it's going to be open by Easter. It's about, I don't know, 45% done. It was in the bulletin. It's moving along. It's not stalling. We need our sidewalks paved. We need a bit, we need more crosswalks to be repainted. The crosswalk by the corner of Langisham and Mopar is faded. I keep telling my councilmen. I don't want to keep telling them, please fix the crosswalk.
Mr. Murphy, please. Mr. Murphy, Mr. Walsh, a second. If you come over here, I'll give you a report on that. Thank you very much. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, or J. Walsh Confidential. Come to our website. It's gone through the roof and hits on what really happened when the mayor left the scene of an accident after he hit Juliette Nicholas, a minority woman. And he left within two minutes. He wasn't interviewed by the police. But I'm telling you right now that the attorney for Ms. Nicholas will depose the mayor and will call the mayor to the witness stand. In fact, everybody knows, the city attorney has already said that the woman who was hit by the LAPD car, the LAPD has changed their story three times. Now they say they're not sure. There's an ongoing investigation whether she was crossing on the light or against the light. First, they said she was out of the crosswalk, crossing between two cars. Then the camera from the LA Times showed that the police were lying. So the police changed their story. This is a great situation. Then the mayor won't tell us where she's, what hospital she is in. Then he went to the hospital and tried to twist her arm not to sue. He's a potential witness. It's a violation of law for him to try to change her story. And I'm telling you right now that even Mike Fewer is saying that the woman who was hit by the car, Julius Nicholas, probably will receive, if it goes to trial, $1 million. They're going to offer her a half a million dollars. Come to my neighborhood, corner of Yuck and Argyle, and see the 10-story building that is controlled by the gangs who sell narcotics all over Hollywood. If you want a discount on your narcotics in Hollywood, just mention Captain Veroni's name, you'll get 10% off. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Mr. Barajas.
Yeah. And I think Sacramento at the Legislative House, there is a bill to pass Glass-Steagall. But the problem is, is that this individual who actually put that bill, he's being attacked by Wall Street lawyers. They're making his life, and I don't know the gentleman's name. I could be mistaken about Anthony Lopez. But you have to understand, whatever measures you're moving for the benefit of the people, you have to understand Glass-Steagall will push the drug cartels back in the British Queen's cunt. FDR did this. Churchill, after FDR died, put that creep Truman in. And Truman bombed Nagasaki and Hiroshima. It proves... Is she okay? It proves that this nation, we've been going back and forth between an American system and a British system. It's not the British people. It's an oligarchical Dutch empire. It's a problem.
Mr. President, that is not within the purview of the City of Los Angeles. Legislation is, but not what he's discussing now.
It's, well, it's part of, it's actually embedded in the Constitution to have a discussion of that issue. If you really want to end this system, if you push Glass-Steagall hard, you will.
Great, thank you. That'll conclude public comment. And Mr. Krikorian has a presentation. The podium and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, it's a great honor to be able to recognize today an artist whose work has enriched the cultural fabric of Southern California for three decades now. Sirun Yerezian. She's been an accomplished and talented artist in many, many ways. And in a moment, you're going to see some of her work up on the screen. But she's perhaps best known for her mastery of the old ancient art of medieval Armenian calligraphy and ornate lettering. In the 5th century, the Armenian alphabet was created by Bishop Mesrop Mashtots. And for the rest of the 5th century and much of the Middle Ages, the Armenian artists devoted themselves to using the Armenian alphabet to translate the classic works. And those works were so valuable and so precious to the Armenian nation that they devoted a considerable amount of time to making sure that this was as ornate as it could possibly be. And the Armenian alphabet was presented often in ways with very ornate, elaborate illustrations for each letter, sometimes involving animals, birds, and so forth. And today, the only known contemporary artist who has mastered that art form and continued the tradition of medieval Armenian ornate lettering is Sirun Yerezian, who's here with us today. In the course of 25 years, she's painted 17 complete alphabets in the Armenian ornate lettering tradition. 12 of them in the Armenian alphabet, one in... 12 of them in the Armenian alphabet, one in, each in Latin, Arabic, Hebrew, Greek, and Cyrillic. She immigrated to the United States in 1976 with her husband Harut and their newly born son, Arno, who's all grown up and with us here today as well. Arno, welcome. Sirun received her bachelor's degree in fine arts in 1985 from the Otis Parsons Art Institute and School of Design in Los Angeles, one of my great constituents now, Otis, in my district as well. Since then, she has devoted her career to being a full-time artist and has, as you've seen, an exceptional body of work and an unrelenting passion and creativity that's evident in all of her paintings, sculptures, and written works. As an artist and an entrepreneur, she's also established the Roslin Art Gallery in 1995, which continues to this day. It's dedicated to promoting young Armenian artists, upcoming Armenian artists, and as she says, it's a working gallery where she often can be found still painting or illuminating, doing illustrating work there with the other artists. Sirun has worked with many youth and inspired many future artists and future generations to learn the ancient Armenian art forms, including Armenian calligraphy. And her recently published book, Sirun Darer, brings to life this cultural art form and showcases Sirun's extraordinary talent and skills. So Sirun, thank you very much for all you've done to enrich the cultural life of Southern California. We're very pleased to be able to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. And her son, Arno, would like to say a few words on Sirun's behalf before we make the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Councilman Kukorian. I may repeat some of the things you said, but I'd like to extend a heartfelt thanks to the City of Los Angeles and the city council members for doing this for my mother, Sirun Yerezyan. She truly deserves this recognition, especially from a city that gave her her angel wings. We moved to Los Angeles in 1976, escaping from war-torn Lebanon, where we were refugees after my grandparents, who were survivors of the Armenian genocide in Turkey, had settled there. If you saw the refugee camp my mother grew up in, a pile of rat-infested dwellings made out of fountain and wood, you would truly appreciate her current life and art so much more. Los Angeles became our final refuge in 1977. As the councilman said, my father established an Abriel bookstore in Little Armenia, long before it was labeled Little Armenia. And it was during this time that my mother, Sirun, entered the Otis Parsons Institute of Art. I grew, I watched her grow up as an artist here. Her early art presents a lot of angst and suffering, you might see them in the presentation, feelings of loneliness and pain, not just from being an immigrant, but from having genocide in the near past, from being a woman in a male-dominated field, and from poverty. You could see some familiar places in her early art, from the housed mannequins in the cozy storefronts in Beverly Hills to the homeless on Skid Row. It was almost as though my mother was yearning for home through painting the homeless. You see her pain in the screaming heads and the famous crucified women. Although Sirun had a difficult youth, she grew up here in this beautiful city as a true angel. She celebrated the multifaceted and multi-ethnic environment of Los Angeles. She blossomed into an amazing colorful artist, so colorful and vibrant that she became known as the Peacock Lady. She has painted more than 1,000 peacocks. She believes we can register with the Guinness Book of Records. But what expresses her colorful celebration of Los Angeles most is the angel she painted during the Angel of the Century project that went on in Los Angeles. It is covered by angels of different ethnicities painted in the style of the medieval Armenian illuminated arts. One of the major accomplishments of Sirun is her rediscovery of the colorful art of ancient and medieval Armenia, from the prehistoric cave art to the medieval Armenian illuminated manuscripts. It is here that she found her forte. She, Sirun has become a modern name master of the illuminated arts. But the last few years have been tremendously difficult for my family. In 2010, my father passed away, and shortly after, my mother was diagnosed with Lou Gehrig's disease. This is a very tragic disease for somebody who used her limbs to the fullest. However, this hasn't stopped her from creating. She continues to create to this day using her eyes. My mother and my father have contributed so much to the culture and artistic life of the Armenian community here and in turn to greater Los Angeles in general. I am so thankful for the city for honoring her today. It feels like a very warm and congratulatory paternal embrace by the gods of Los Angeles for an angel who grew up here in your arms as an artist. I'd like to read one more thing that she wrote, using her eyes, one letter at a time, and that's it. "Los Angeles for me represents the world because different cultures live peacefully side by side. Growing up in refugee camp, I used to dream of a multicultural place like this where women are, are not discriminated from doing the things they wish. I achieved my dreams in this wonderful city by studying art, which was a true dream come true. For 30 years, art became my beloved occupation. During nights, I painted all subjects related to my experiences, homelessness and genocide and crucified women, serious subjects. My art is time-full, from cave art to contemporary art. In art, there's no new or old. When we watch paintings on our walls, they serve as windows and doors to silent stages and nature, enclosed and abstracted mystery. There were no cameras or iPhones or iPads before. Without art, we would never have known our ancestors' occupations nor the fashions of the day, nor their worships of gods, nor the nature surrounding them. Art is how I met my ancestors. Their occupations transformed me into a 20th and 21st century illuminator. After my illustrated Armenian alphabet became popular, I became so addicted to the art of my super-talented ancestors that I began manually copying and drawing their fingernail-sized letters. And using today's technology, Photoshop, I perfected their art. I also created the missing letters to create complete alphabets. They are all included in the new book, Sirun Darer. With this book, I want to educate our future generations to continue this precious art of the ornate initials. Sirun in Armenian means beautiful. It comes from the word ser, which is love. The letters presented in my book are eternal symbols of beauty and education and especially of love. I love all of you and especially this beautiful city of angels, Los Angeles. Thank you."
All right, thank you. Very impressive. As they're moving on to take pictures, thank you again. I believe the council has motions for posting and referral?
Yes.
Those of you posted and referred, the desk is clear. Members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Mr. Labonge?
Thank you. Members, I think we should salute Mitch Englander for leading the way last week on what was the 20th anniversary of the Northridge earthquake and the gathering at California State University in Northridge. I think it was so important. I hope, as we said for the podium, each of you designated deputy. We really got to educate the public, there will be another earthquake, and Mitch did a good job, all the way around, your whole staff, Greg Smith, your predecessor, and Hal Berenson.
Thank you, Tom. I'm blushing. Appreciate that, though. But thank you. And thank you all for everything that you helped out with last week as well. I truly appreciate it.
Can I just also introduce someone who's in this audience here? I think we should give Paul's great honoree another big hand, too. Paul, good job. You're special, Angel. This building is a very special place, and it really got special when Mayor Bradley came here in 1973, where he opened the doors and invited all the city in. And many of his staff that was there were young and energetic and did great things. One of that staff member now is working across the street, he's a federal judge, Terry Hatter. Give him a big hand, one of Mayor Bradley's staff, a federal judge who visits our council. And from time to time, I'm able to meet his externs, is that the correct way? Not from Ireland, though, this time, right? But usually from Ireland, we give them a good tour. But Judge Hatter, thank you for your great service to the United States, appointed by then-President Carter, one of the longest-serving federal judges here in the Los Angeles ranks. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. Very impressive. Thank you. Your honor for being here as well. Thank you. Well said. That was great. With that, are there any adjourning motions, colleagues? Yes, if we can get everybody in council to please rise, if you could, please rise, if you could. Mr. Labonge.
Members, I'd like to ask, we adjourn in memory of Jean Talley Roth, who was a night child born to her family of Minnie and Lamu Talley on January 6, 1925. She lived a long life, a very special person. She passed away peacefully at her home here in Los Angeles on the 12th of January at the age of 89. And anytime you get to 80, it's very special, and all the way through. She moved to Southern California in 1945, where she met and married her husband, Oliver Tex Roth, and raised their four beautiful children. She was founder and president of the Janina Knits in Los Angeles. She retired from Nauman Marcus at Beverly Hills after over 20 years' service. She's arrived by her children, Olivia, Robin, Jeff, and many, many grandchildren and others. I knew her daughter, Olivia, I dated her in high school. She was a very good family and a good fun family to be at, and a good mother, and, but she lived to be 89. And she has her services today, so the City of Angels know she's already with the angels. I ask, we adjourn in memory of Jean Talley Roth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others, members? No, thank you. That concludes the agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a great day.